But like I mentioned, we do believe that it'll fit the structure and meet the setbacks. Fifty by sixty is not a huge lot, and he has, based on what he's showing me in the site plan that he has, I think it'll fit. Now, we haven't gotten to the development stage yet with any formal plans being submitted, but he is requesting this now. In the area, there's also, there's a lot of B two, or B two zoned area right now, or industrial. But most, this is being used and has been utilized as single-family residence. And so it's a legal non-conforming use, and with the rezone, if we agreed to the rezone, he'd be able to build the second dwelling on the property. This R two point five would not conform with the current, the current comprehensive plan. But as you know, we are moving hopefully to a new comprehensive plan at the end of the month. And this would align more closely to what that proposed comprehensive plan will call for.
Questions?
Steve, it looks like that it's completely surrounded, or at least on three sides or so, by property that's zoned industrial. And then across the street, we've kind of catty-cornered its apartments. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir. And then directly across the street, there's an undeveloped parcel, which is also zoned industrial. But as I mentioned, this property and some of the others in the vicinity are currently being used for single-family residences, so.
Are there any issues with regard to utilities?
No, sir.
Anybody else?
Mr. Killen, were there any comments or questions or concerns voiced by any of the people in the area?
Just that one person that spoke in opposition.
Okay. But other than that, there were no other communications?
No additional, no additional contacts for or against, other than that one person that attended the P N Z meeting.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Mr. Cole, is he here?
Yes.
You want to come make a presentation? You have three minutes, if you don't mind. State your name and address.
Good evening, council members. My name is Zane Cole. I'm the property owner at one eighty-five West Park Street. I'm hoping to rezone my property from R one to R two point five to allow for medium density, so I can get a second property, a second building, a second home on that property. The current description for R two point five, I have it, I'm going to read it out for you guys. It says, "This integrated residential housing district provides for medium-density city neighborhood development. The primary land use allows for single-family dwellings, two to four family dwelling units, patio homes, condominiums, and townhomes. Generally, this district is for developments resulting in individually plotted homes or dwelling units, and generally owner occupied." I know you council members have been a part of several developments, and you have a lot more experience in it than I do. But my opinion is that Stevensville is, has a shortage of single-family homes, and I believe that we need to build more single-family homes. I think because of that shortage, we have higher costs, higher home prices, and therefore higher rent prices as well. I think if we build more homes and add to our current stock, then I believe that we will be able to keep some long-term residents who were considering leaving town because of the cost and how expensive it's getting. I've been a part of this community for fifteen-plus years, and I'd hate for that to happen to me or my family down the road. I love to be, you know, stay here as long as I can, and I think in order to do that, we need to build more homes to keep the cost of living down, to keep people around. But like, like we mentioned, there is R three, zoned right across the street where we have a multifamily complex of twelve-plus units. They're surrounded by mobile homes and older homes that are near the end of their time. They've been here quite a while. I think by building a new home right within that middle of that, it'll bring up the value of everybody surrounding it. It'll contribute to the community and make it look better, and also bring up the value of everybody else's property and just contribute to the neighborhood. Mr. Killen is very serious about all the standards we have to meet, and this would not get approved if we weren't able to meet. You know, you have to be under forty percent as far as the footprint of the house to the lot size. My lot size is fifty-three hundred square feet, and the house I'm wanting to build is thirteen hundred square feet. And that's twenty-four percent, which easily falls under the standards that the city requires. There are several other setbacks, such as fifteen-foot front setback, back setback, five feet on the sides, two parking spaces, several requirements that we've been able to meet. And able to meet every single one of those without asking for variance. I think this would add to the value of the neighborhood and align with Stevensville's long-term needs, and get Stevensville to where it needs to be. Thank you, guys.
Anywhere, I have a question for Zane. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
With that, we'll enter into a public hearing on case number R Z two, twenty twenty-four dash zero zero nine. Is there anybody who'd like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of the proposal, other than obviously Mr. Cole, which is our done? All right. Hearing that, we, hearing that, then we'll close the public hearing and consider approval of an ordinance rezoning a property located at one eighty-five West Park, being parcel R thirty-one, four sixty-six, S three, fifty, thirty-five hundred, first edition, block thirty-five, lot seven and eight of the Stevensville, E wrath County, Texas, from single-family residence R one to integrated housing district R two point five. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero dash one eight, which would call for the rezoning of one eighty-five West Park Street.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? See to vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir. We'll take all the ad warm text we can get from you.
Ready, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Case P D twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one, applicant of Southwestern Pigeon Road LLC, requesting a rezone of property at three one five F M twenty-three oh three. This is parcel six five zero nine zero. We have, it's a ninety-one point eight three acre parcel, and then also within the city limits before it was annexed, it was a three acre parcel that they're also requesting be rezoned from single-family to planned development with this particular project. May recall, on May seventh, twenty twenty-four, city council annexed both parcels, or actually the one parcel, the ninety-one point acres, and combined it, through that annexation, these two parcels are now in the city limits. The applicant went to the Planning and Zoning Commission and presented a conceptual plan on May fifteenth for the planned development, and received comments from local area residents during that conceptual plan. On July seventeenth, the applicant returned requesting approval of development plan and the zoning being reassigned due to planned development. Staff has reviewed water, sewer, and drainage plans, and comments have been provided. The plan has been reviewed by Development Service, Public Works, and Fire. Going back to the conceptual presentation, the developer was very attentive to the comments being made. And when he returned to the July seventeenth meeting, he had made some, or development partners had made some revisions to the site plan. And those included increasing the thirty, the setbacks. So they are now increasing the setbacks to thirty foot. The requirement for this property would be ten feet and twenty feet, depending on the position of the property or the location on the property. They are providing landscape buffering, and they reduce the heights of the storage buildings that were on the site plan. The site plan references short-term rentals, and as you know, we currently don't regulate short-term rentals, but they are going to be a component of this planned development. Developer has prepared a driveway application and presented that to text. It's under review. Early indicators are that they expressed that this would be reviewed and anticipate a favorable reply. A T I A has been conducted and under review. Four persons spoken opposition at the July seventeenth meeting. And let me, if I may, Mayor, switch over. I want to bring attention to, in the packet on page forty-two, the developer has provided a table basically showing the, what the R three standards would be if this were in the city limits. This would be the closest zoning or the base zoning for the property. That type of zoning would allow twenty-four acres per unit. They're only proposing five. They meet or exceed almost every requirement of the R three zoning. Their landscape buffer, there is a, an error we discovered in the site plan. They're actually providing a greater landscape buffer than what would be required by city ordinance. Where they are requesting some deviations is in parking at their general or common area venue. This development will have an entertainment venue, a small entertainment venue, bodega, and leasing office. And it's those areas where they want to reduce the, the parking requirement, but they will be providing shuttles for that, that area. They have a height increase requested. These are for the common areas and for the townhomes. And the townhome will allow them to build three-story units. There will only be three-story units, but they'll have higher ceilings, and that's why they're asking for the increase in the height. There is a, again, for the six, the semi-public buildings, leasing office, clubhouse, that's also included in the, the height request. There is a request regarding parkland dedication fees. And Mayor and Council, I had mentioned that I would try to keep my comments short tonight. I know Mr. John Allender is here, and he has a presentation that he would like to provide to the city council. Try to just prepare, provide a little more detail than what I may be able to do. I'm familiar with the project, but not at the level he is familiar with it, obviously. So before I turn it over to Mr. Allender, if it's the mayor and council's pleasure, just want to offer myself for any questions.
Questions for Steve? Yes, sir.
Mr. Killen, from staff's perspective, have they been responsive to your comments, questions, concerns, as well as those of the surrounding residents?
Yes, sir. They've been, they approached us before the property was annexed. They had a very thorough plan. We've worked with them. I provided some details back to them on their first submittal. They were very responsive to that. I felt like they were attentive to the, the comments made at the conceptual plan. They addressed those, in my mind, to a fairly substantial, or to the satisfaction of what I would expect. I know this is a tough request for some of the local property owners adjacent to that area. I certainly understand their perspective. But this is a, this project, if it is approved, I think will be a less invasive project than if we provided zoning of another nature. Since it's annexed, we do have to provide a zoning, a base zoning for the property within six months from the date of annexation. So that's, that's out there. With the density of five units per acre, I don't know that we could find another land zoning district that would, would have a lower land use requirement. There's not one. There's simply not one. And one comment I didn't make, if I may, this was a motion to approve. They did not get the two-thirds of vote. And so it moves forward without a recommendation. A lot of the, I'm sure a question will be, why did it not get approved? And some of the concerns addressed by the, the local residents, and then heard by the P N Z, and they mentioned this during their, their discussion, was the T I A not being completed and the driveway application not being completed. The developer is fully aware that if that doesn't happen, the project doesn't move forward.
Any questions?
And they're requesting for a planned development, which is, in my opinion, a double-edged sword. Because if they request a planned development, they must follow what they have submitted. There, there cannot be any deviation from that and be acceptable from city, from what they've asked the city for. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. They have to build what they say they will build. The ordinance does allow for minor deviations, which staff determines if, if they're minor or not. But it specifically lists, if there's a deviation from the development, planned development, then it has to be, it cannot be items A through J, and that may be increased density, reduced setback requirements, things of that nature. Otherwise, it can be a, a small deviation can still move forward. An example may be, there may be less units provided, but they can't increase the units. So if there were some, something related to, let's say drainage or an easement that has to be cut across the property, and they, they reduce the number of dwellings, then that could be deemed a minor amendment, because it's not increasing density.
So from staff's perspective, this would give staff the opportunity to monitor and, and basically be sure that they conformed to what they had presented and, and not overdo any of the dwelling units or drainage issues or anything else?
That's correct. They say they're going to provide a thirty-foot buffer. It has to be a thirty-foot buffer unless we deem it a minor amendment. And that would be subject to location on the property, of course, and the reason behind the, the deviation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Killen.
Yes, sir.
John, Cole, which one of y'all want to make a presentation? Introduce yourself, give your address. We've talked about timeframe, so it's yours.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that. My name is John Allender, from San Antonio, Texas, four one seven Eighth Street, San Antonio, Texas. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm joined with Cole Gillian Parks and his family, Jeff Landon and Chris Toby, with Kim Lee Horn, who are civil engineers. They also conducted traffic impact analysis, water quality study, and Mr. John Jones with Imperial Construction, the, the general contractor. And we're excited to be able to present this project tonight and answer any questions that you might have. I do have a presentation. I'm going to try to go as quickly as possible through that. I don't know if we've got that queued up. Okay. Is this the one with revisions? Okay. Well, then.
It's the one you recently sent.
Yes, it's the last one that we sent. Okay. All right. So we'll start with the first slide, then. If we could move to the next, yeah. So, all right, this isn't, this isn't quite what we were intending to present, but that's okay. The, the project has been in development for over a year. This presentation tonight represents over-year planning and design. We've conducted, as I mentioned, traffic impact analysis, detailed programming, a detailed market study to prove up the viability of this. And we think that tonight, we're, we're presenting a plan that represents a, an active lifestyle and a real addition to the community here. Just to start, we, we start internally with discussions about the qualities that we want to imbue into a project like this. We want this.
I apologize. I believe your presentation is, is on here. I just didn't pull it all off. So, screen, page nine to six, I believe.
There we go. There we go. Thank you. So as, as we mentioned, the property was annexed into the city in May, so we are, we're now seeking the planned development. We'll go to the next, and next then. The, we, we worked with the developer in trying to identify some of the key attributes of the project. We want this to be a familiar place with an architectural style that speaks to the region. We are, there are many times I'm going to touch on this, but we want this to be a tranquil, quiet place for the residents. There's a matter of convenience also that we're trying to achieve. This is on the edge of the city limits now, and you'll see that some of the amenity packages that we're building in will provide for basically grocery and access to some amenities that, that, immediate to the tenants. And this will be an active community in providing recreational access immediately within the community. You'll see a lot of efforts to bring, as, as traffic is coming into this property, there's a whole mechanism in place where we're trying to slow traffic down, make this a quiet, safe place for the residents. We're mixing bikes and hiking trails within the, the street section. So really, this is intended to be a quiet, tranquil retreat for the tenants. We've also had several discussions about our sustainability goals. This is, this is a conversation that goes beyond energy efficiency, you know, high-efficiency HVAC systems. From the very beginning, literally the, the first meeting that we had with Mr. Gillian Parks, we talked about water on this property. We recognize that this is ninety-two acres, actually ninety-five acres, of undeveloped pasture land, sitting right on the watershed of the Bosque. We were very conscious of the way water was going to move from this site back into the watershed. And we have spent an enormous amount of effort designing systems to make sure that we filter that water and protect that water before it goes back into the watershed. So our, our site plan is really organized into two nodes, the eastern section and the western section. Property is accessed off of twenty-three oh three from one access point. This will be a gated private community. At the entrance to the site, there will be a gatehouse so the guests can check in. And outside of that gate is the leasing center. And as you move into the site, you see this kind of sweeping boulevard that moves through. That is the definition of the floodplain. We, we literally defined the organization of this site so that all of the development would be outside of the floodplain. The, the main lane, drive coming into the, the property is a two-lane divided, divided boulevard. We, in working with the fire department, were allowed to provide one access point into the site because every building on this property will receive a fire sprinkler. We're going to sprinkle the entire property. The, the double-lane road coming in is also the introduction to this proj, this project and the, this whole hydrology system. Because that, that divided boulevard coming in, the, the planted median that goes through there is one of the first introductions of these water gardens that's going to capture rainwater and filter it before it goes back into the watershed. In the middle of the site, really kind of at the pinch point of the, of the site because of the floodplain, is what we're calling the town center. That's effectively the clubhouse. That will provide the amenities of, of a fitness center, clubhouse, the mail center. It's also going to provide a, a small grocery, which we'll, we'll touch on later. This central area also provides storage units for the residents, and it fronts, it's kind of at the head of the central lawn, which is a, a public green space for the community. Now, I, I want to state now, at the head of that lawn is a pavilion. And there's been some conversation about that being a concert venue, and it absolutely is not. It is a park pavilion. It's a park pavilion that sits at the head of an open lawn. We did have discussions at the concept phase about opening this property up to the community so that the Stevensville had access to the park system here. But in further discussion with developer from security, security aspects, we want to maintain this as a private community. So that, one of the options there, not to get, there was a conversation about, and sometimes there might be a singer-songwriter and acoustic guitar that wants to come out and put on a small little concert at that pavilion, and we could open that up to the community. That was one opportunity we saw. That, that's off the table now. We're not, we're not having concerts on the lawn. This is not going to be Woodstock and Stevensville. It, it is a picnic pavilion on that central lawn.
Alan might have wanted one.
Well.
It's kind of music east.
We'll, we'll find some other opportunities.
You're the only one old enough to remember that.
Moving to the west portion, the, is the larger section of the, the residences. This also includes the guest houses, which are provided for the tenants to reserve for guests, as well as a townhouse component. And then throughout this, you'll see there are several systems of parks. Obviously, within the floodplain is the main park with the open lawn and the meadow. Between the, the blocks of each of the single-family residences, there's a whole system of pocket parks. Essentially, we took out some of the homes to put parks into those blocks, and that is another system of trails. It's also part of the hydrology, hydrology, hydrology system as well, and I'll, I'll go into detail of that later. And then at the northwest portion, there's a, a dog park for the, the tenants to use. So I think we'll go to the next. We talked about an active lifestyle and recreation. We're providing over seven and a half miles of trails to the tenants to use. It's a combination of hike and bike trails, sidewalks within the, the residential blocks that are, you know, connected through those pocket parks like I described. And it, it's all keyed back to that central boulevard. What's showed in that blue dash there is an indication that the main boulevard, when you come in, is a divided two-lane boulevard. Each lane is twenty-four feet wide for fire access, one way in, one way out. So that if there is a blockage on one of those lanes coming in, fire access can still access the other lane because it's twenty-four feet wide. But we're striping that for one lane of traffic. So on a twenty-four-foot road section, you're going to have twelve feet dedicated to car and twelve feet dedicated to bicycles, to scooters and carts within the community. So again, that whole idea of when you come in to La Paloma, it's about slowing down and, you know, as you make your way into the, the community. So the key plan, this is, this is really kind of the, the meat of the development. We were proposing a total of three hundred and fifty residential units. There are two hundred and ninety-seven single-family units that are a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom plans. And then there are fifty-seven townhome, townhome units. And the townhome unit, units are a mix of two and three bedrooms. So in total, there are three hundred and fifty doors on, in the community. The, go back one, if you could, yeah. There's the short-term rental product, which is in the light blue, just on the west side of that meadow. Twenty-three units. Again, those are reserved only for the tenants. If you're in a one-bedroom, a single-family home, and you have family coming in and you want to reserve a guest house, then you'll have that option to reserve that. The leasing center will go into the plans of that. The leasing center is not just for leasing, it's also a co-working space, which will be open to the community. The storage, there are sixty-eight storage units. And then what I wanted to point out, there's a red dot, and you'll see that red dot kind of distributed through the property. That dot indicates a location of guest parking within the city, within the, the residential blocks. So each unit will have parking for the tenants. But then we also, again, took out residential units to make sure that we had some surface parking for guests that are, that could be coming and visiting. The point of that is, we won't be allowing any on-street parking in the development for fire life safety access. You will either need to park in the driveway or your garage or on the, the surface lot. That part, that red dot also indicates the location of a shuttle stop. The community will be providing a shuttle to its tenants to get around the community, as well as going to the city and to Tarleton. That's an effort to reduce the amount of traffic coming in and out of, of the community. The phasing plan, the project will be built in two phases. The majority of the units will be built in phase one, which is the western portion. This also includes, obviously, the main boulevard for fire access coming in. We, we are also talking about including that. We, um, we are also talking about including that northern, uh, road that's on the very north, um, border, so there's kind of two lanes coming in. We, so first, the first phase is two hundred and sixty-nine units. That's the single-family and the townhome product. I wanna point out also that Phase One also includes an extensive amount of the parks. Um, there are the pocket parks that cut through the block. There's the dog park, and then there's over two miles of trail that loop that entire, uh, western portion. So we're expecting, assuming, uh, we're successful in zoning and going through engineering review. Um, we intend to break ground a year from now, in August twenty-twenty-five on, on Phase One. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk quickly through the architecture so you understand what it is we're building. The leasing center is really kind of the introduction to this architectural style that we've established. We, from the beginning said, we wanna create a style that is unique but still feels appropriate. Um, and so we settled on what we're calling a Texas hacienda style. It's essentially a spa- a Spanish revival architecture. Um, we really wanna key on, key in on regional materials, um, and, and detailing. The, um, go to the next image here. The leasing center is, again, the front door to the community. Accessing off of twenty-three oh three, there will be a gatehouse. Guests will be able to come into the motor court, uh, for parking, and then, uh, the tenants will also have a separate parking lot. This building is accessed through a courtyard, and it, it fronts, it, it faces to the rear, I should say, this new water feature. There is an existing tank there that we're gonna be improving. Um, so there's a water feature that, uh, the back porch can, can look onto. At the front, um, uh, per the PD requirements, uh, the, the development signage is really a pretty discreet low wall, four feet tall, again, using regional stone, and the signage is a, um, a weathered steel plate with the water jet cut. There'll be a, a little bit of a backlighting to that at night, and there'll be sconces on the pylons. Um, we've got more specific information on fencing. Again, there is a gatehouse at, at the, uh, the entrance. The gatehouse will be of the same regional stone as the leasing center. Um, tenants will be able to come in with a, a clicker or an RAF, um, tag. Guests will check in at the gatehouse. Uh, we designed the drive here at the gatehouse to be two lanes, so tenants won't be backing up behind guests trying to get in. They'll be able to bypass and go through the gates in order to relieve congestion out onto the, to the highway. The, the leasing center itself, I mean, recognizing in today's world for multifamily, uh, for a development like this, a leasing center, really, you need two offices and a place where you can sign a lease on an iPad. There's really not a lot of real estate needed for a leasing center. So because the clubhouse is central to the development, um, we still wanted a leasing center out on the, the road frontage, and we proposed a, a coworking space for the tenants, the residents to use, as well as the community. So this will be an opportunity for any of the residents that are working from home, which is still just a huge trend, um, that need an office to meet with clients, or if they wanna have a work session, uh, there's an opportunity here to reserve conference rooms and private offices. Uh, there'll, there's a small coffee bar to service this, and just kind of a multiple, multitude of different, uh, opportunities to meet. Um, this would also be open to the community on a, basically on a membership or on a, um, a rental basis. If, if, if you're working from home and you want a place to meet, then there would be an opportunity to come here. So the architecture of this building, again, uh, we've, we've looked to regional cues, um, this Spanish revival style, La Paloma, the, the name coming from, really from Pigeon Road and a Spanish interpretation of that. We went with the Spanish revival style. Um, the leasing center, and you'll see in the te- the town center, will be using stone. The other architecture of the bill- of these buildings is, uh, will be white stucco. Uh, we're also looking at clay tile roof accents, heavy timber porches. Um, this is the view of the, the rear porch here, looking to that water feature. So really, um, setting the, you know, this, this statement of, really, it's a quality development. We're, we're investing in the quality architecture of this leasing center because it's, it's, it's meant to endure. All right, we'll go through the residential units. Um, again, the residences are built out in these two phases, one, two, and three bedrooms. Uh, we've looked at a Spanish revival bungalow style for our, uh, for our inspiration here. Uh, one note, the, these buildings are essentially going to be flat-roofed behind a, a parapet. And when I say flat-roofed, there's, it's a low slope to one, to, to one direction. So, um, we're doing that because we intend to collect all of the rainwater off of the, these roofs on the backside of these buildings, and that rainwater will be then filtered through bioswells within those pocket parks. So, well, you're not gonna see a lot of, um, peaked roofs and composite shingle roofs. It's going to be an architectural style, uh, with these, with, uh, with these parapets. Again, we have, we essentially have six plans. These are the two one-bedroom options. The one-bedroom options will have a carport. This is one concession, um, one specific concession in the parking that we're looking at. Um, the R-three requires two parking spaces side by side with a double-width drive. For our one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, we're requesting two parking spaces but in a tandem style. So we have one parking space under a carport and then a driveway li- length that'll allow you to park outside of the, the right-of-way, so, or the road dimension. So, um, the one-bedroom plan is a carport. This is the two-bedroom plan. Um, for the two bedrooms, we're gonna have an option of a private garage and a drive, or a carport and a drive. And the three-bedroom plan, all of the three-bedroom, um, will have a full two-car garage plus, uh, the full, full drive to the front. These are renderings of the streetscapes within the, uh, within the units. Um, we did include some clay tile roofs on these as, uh, as reference, but the majority of these buildings are gonna have these flat roofs to collect rainwater behind the parapet. Um, we have effectively six plans, but we have developed an accessory package, if you will, of, uh, porch details, awnings, columns, lighting, so that we can mix and match details to the different plans, and so we actually have a multitude of different designs. So it's not just cookie cutter. Ri- we're not just repeating six buildings over and over again. We're gonna be able to mix those up and get a lot of variety to the streetscape. The town center is, uh, again, central to the project. Admittedly, this building, uh, and that would be coming in Phase Two, we're still working through the, the final details and programming of it. Um, it will be fa- you know, following that same architectural style as the leasing center, using regional stone. As I mentioned, this is a fitness center. This is a clubhouse. This will be the mail center. Um, we're also gonna be providing this, what we've been calling the bodega, and it's a small grocery. It will also have, go to the plan. It'll also have a kitchen, which will be preparing meals ready to eat. So on kind of a DoorDash-style, residents can order meals from this location. Um, there'll also be packaging meals, like in the grab-and-go. This'll also be the kitchen that serves the concession stand to the pool. Um, the pool is actually a pretty modest-sized pool, as planned, considering this community. This isn't a big resort-style pool with, you know, lots of hot tubs and cabanas. It's actually, it's supposed to be a, a pretty quiet place, uh, for, for the residents. Um, so the, the actual design of that town center is still in development, and we'll be coming back to Mr. Killen and staff with the final design of that in the Phase Two applications. If we could just go back to the storage, yeah. So the storage buildings, which are behind the town center, um, this was one of the areas that we did make a revision from our concept plan. Initially, these buildings were five feet, we're, we were asking for a five-foot setback off of the property line. Um, we're now looking at a thirty-foot setback off the property line. Um, that includes a, a ten-foot landscape buffer and a privacy fence. The bottom rendering there is the view from our neighbor's property. Um, that privacy fence will be a white stucco column with a wood privacy screen. And as Mr. Killen mentioned, the, these buildings are limited to sixteen feet. They will have the, the tile roof accents as well. Lighting on these buildings will just be carriage house lanterns next to the garage doors. We don't have large overhead Cobra lighting, um, on these buildings. The guesthouses, as we mentioned, um, centrally located, uh, these are available for the residents only. They're not open to the community. They're not gonna be on Airbnb websites. It will be reserved through the leasing, um, software. The, um, you know, the inspiration, again, is looking at historic, uh, Spanish revival apartment buildings. We're looking at, you know, some of the detailing that goes along with that. Uh, two stories each, accessed by an exterior stair. Um, each guest suite is a living room and a bedroom, uh, with a, a full bath in between. First floor and then second floor is accessed by that exterior balcony. And then the rendering of that, um, three buildings with the courtyards in the front. Um, so again, I think this is gonna be a real, um, you know, plus to the community, these residents being able to reserve these, these guest suites. And then the townhome product, which lives at the, kind of the south and north end, um, we looked at, we'll look at the inspiration, yeah. We looked at, uh, historic hotels and some historic, uh, apartment buildings, again, in the Spanish revival style. We have two plans for the townhomes. There's a two-bedroom plan and a three-bedroom plan. They're both the same dimensions as far as the width, um, and depth. Um, first floor is dedicated to private parking. There's a full two-car garage on the first floor. On the, 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 uh, two-bedroom plan has a foyer, and then second floor is living, third floor is the, uh, the, um, bedroom level. And then, we can go to the third floor plan. Oh, okay. So, um, and then, this is another area where we are asking for the concessions. As we, as I mentioned, these are three-story buildings. Some of them will, will have a roof terrace. Um, with today's market, we're really trying to achieve ten-foot ceilings within these townhomes. Um, that with, with being three stories, plus the, some of these having a roof addition and a stair that we need to go up, we're asking for a forty, forty-eight-foot height limit on the townhomes only. So the, th- this information is in the packet as far as, as, as Mr. Killen mentioned, the R-three standard that we're looking at compared to our development standards, um, this property will be platted as one property. So in looking at the closest development standards, we looked at R-three because that's multiple buildings on one lot. And so when we're look, when we're talking about front yard setbacks, side and corner setbacks, it's actually the setback around the perimeter of, of the property. This is the graphic from the adopted development standard for R-three. Um, again, considering the property lines, not internal blocks, but the property lines, uh, were within this, uh, standard, you have a ten-foot setback for a side yard and a twenty-five-foot setback on corner and twenty-five-foot front yard setbacks, twenty-foot rear yard setbacks. We're establishing a thirty-foot setback around the perimeter of the site. So as far as side and rear yards, it's a thirty-foot perimeter. Mr. Killen noted, there was an error in the, 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 uh, graphic plan. We called out a twenty-foot landscape buffer. It's a thirty-foot landscape buffer. The, the table that you have in your packet is correct. It's a, it's a thirty-foot setback and a thirty-foot landscape buffer around the perimeter. And this is, um, really kind of the, the standard then for our internal, the internal streets and front yard setbacks. Um, and if you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer that. Again, there's a, there's a graphic error. It's a thirty-foot setback and a thirty-foot landscape buffer to, um, to our neighbors. Per the PD, uh, requirements, we're submitting the fencing plan. The frontage along one-oh-eight and twenty-three oh three is the center image, a stone pylon with a wood, uh, uh, rail. That, that may be a s- a painted steel rail. We're, we're pricing both options for durability. Um, the orange along the northern property line is the privacy fence to our neighbors. Um, that teal is the stone indicating the stone gates at the front. And then the dashed orange line around the perimeter is simply saying that the existing barbed wire fences, which are in good repair, will be maintained. Um, and that there's a, there's a Pedro along most of those is where, a windbreak that'll be maintained as well. Lighting, um, we submitted the lighting plan. There's two types of lighting on the, the property. One is the, the main street lighting is a, basically a fourteen-foot lantern. We're doing more lights on a lower level for, um, so we're, we don't have tall twenty-plus-foot Cobra heads that are, would be flooding the, uh, the property. We also then, within the pocket parks, have, um, pedestrian lighting. These are the fixtures. Uh, these will be dark sky rated. We won't have any spilled over onto the properties, um, adjacent to us. Um, and then the lanterns, some small discreet lan-ting, uh, lighting at the front. Um, traffic, we've, as, as mentioned, we've been working with TexDOT for months now. Um, the one-oh-eight and twenty-three oh three, this is actually from the, um, the comprehensive plan, the, uh, Stevensville twenty-fifty plan, but it indicates, it, it's a good graphic to show that one-oh-eight is now operating at an A-B level of surface. Um, we can go to the next. We've, we've been working with TexDOT, and the driveway application has been submitted. Um, from their comments, we're proposing a turn lane into the property from the westbound coming off of one-oh-eight, and a deceleration lane, um, from the eastbound, uh, turning into the property. Um, we will be reconstructing the driveways of the, the neighbor, um, per TexDOT requirements. Um, we've also, as I mentioned, there's several things that we've implemented in trying to reduce traffic in and out of this. We have the shuttle service. We're asking for a parking reduction, um, with these, in, in working with these, um, these design features, we feel like we're, and we have proved up with the traffic impact analysis that these roads will still maintain an A-B level of service. Again, the forty-eight-foot height limit is for the townhomes only, and that's really to meet market demands with a three-story, um, building. We've talked about the storage units, uh, limiting those to sixteen feet with the privacy fence. Um, I wanna reiterate again, noise. This is now, we are now in the city limits of Stevensville. We have to follow all of the same requirements, um, as any other land within Stevens- the city of Stevensville. This is not a public events venue. Uh, there's a picnic pavilion, but we won't be holding, uh, concerts at, at this, at this location. Um, safety, this is a private development gated and monitored. There'll be private safety, um, patrol and secured perimeter fencing to our neighbors. Um, I could spend hours talking about water. I don't wanna bore you with it, but this is just a, just a peek into the planning that we've done as far as the site hydrology. There's really, um, you know, multiple layers of how we're treating water. Within the streets themselves, every street, every residential street will have a planted landscape strip that serves as a, a water garden to capture rainwater and filter it before it goes into this, the central drainage areas. There's also a large wetland area, um, there on the eastern portion that feeds into the floodplain. And the green squares throughout represent the pocket parks where we're collecting roof water from all of the buildings and filtering that through bioswells before it goes into the watershed. Um, we'll just go through these quickly. These are the street sections, uh, just to kind of show you the level of design that we're at now. Um, there's a main, uh, what we call the dry creek on the western portion. Part of the park system, but it's also part of the hydrology. And then this is on the eastern portion, showing the wetland features that we're designing with the rain gardens that, that filter into that. We really feel like this property, this project is presenting an incredible development benefit to the city. Um, the, this project is really following the, the future land use plan that's been adopted, as well as the new comprehensive plan that's being considered. Um, in the Stevensville twenty-fifty plan, this portion, this, this property and the, the properties north have been identified as a complete neighborhood development. And that really represents, um, a mixed neighborhood that is multiple, you know, medium-density, low-story development, and then a multitude of different land uses. So we have different residential products. We have the, the, um, the leasing center, which op- you know, operates also as a coworking area, and our clubhouse, which will have the convenience of grocery and fitness that goes along with it. We just wanted to, to speak that, before we started any of this, we, we underwent a detailed market study. Um, we have got, we have an enormous amount of data and metrics we, we can share with you on the market study that proves up that with the percentage of, uh, rental occupancy within- on the market study that proves up that with the percentage of rental occupancy within, and this isn't just North Texas, this was a, a specific target area around, um, Stevenville. With the, with the amount of product that's available and decreasing, uh, vacancy rates, we've proved up that this is a viable product and project. And so we're, we're confident in its success. In working with Imperial Construction, we've identified there's going to be over 150 construction jobs, uh, for over three years. Mr. Gillen Parks has indicated there's going to be eight to 10 permanent jobs plus seasonal jobs associated with the project. Not to mention that this project is going to be extending city services, the city utilities north, um, per the future land use plan. We're extending a 12-inch water line up 108, um, that's over a mile. And we're also extending sanitary sewer across the, the soccer fields through an easement there. This is infrastructure that's, um, over $750,000 in cost that, that's at the cost of the developer. So that infrastructure, especially the water line, will be available for future use, um, in future projects. So, again, I appreciate the opportunity to present this and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for John?
Very thorough.
Hearing none, thank you very much, sir. We'll make you back up in a minute. Hearing, no other questions, we'll enter into a public hearing on case number PD 2024-001. I have four folks who have signed up. We'll let anybody else that wants to speak as well. First one will be Karen Dickens. Will you be able to say your name and your address? You'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Karen Dickens. I live at 2537 North State Highway 108 here in Stevenville. So this proposal will be across the backside of our home. We come in, well, we come in either way, but it faces, our house faces 108. I sent a letter to you dated March the 20th, which was a long time ago, so I'm assuming that you received it and have had an opportunity to read it. I'm just going to do kind of an overview of that letter. I'm not going into the detail that I went to in the letter. I just want to highlight again the things that are of concern to myself and my husband. First, we weren't notified that this property was going to be annexed into the city limits. First we knew about it, it had already, I'm really nervous.
There's no reason to be.
I'm really nervous. We had, we did not know that it was going to be annexed into the city or we would prob, I know the four of us would have been here before that ever happened. A big concern is that only the one entrance and exit. There's going to be lots of cars. Most households don't have one car anymore. They have multiple cars. So when you multiply the number of houses by the number of cars that are going in and out that one entrance, with it being so close to the split there, that V where 108 and 2303 split off, it's just going to be a traffic jam coming and going. And especially if they're having to check in at a gate before they can get in. That's a, that's a real concern. We're concerned that while the project is being promoted as young professionals, if that fails, it will turn into student housing. Because I understand the money going into the project, they'll have to keep it rented. They, they just have to, to get their money back. We, our area out there, even though we're right outside the city limits, we're still considered country. And this project increases safety issues for our livestock, for farm equipment going up and down those roads, and again, the traffic flow. Most of us agree that we feel like a rental property or division of this type will reduce our property values considerably. And the property is in a non-floodplain. I'm, uh, Cassie will attest to her deadline, where it shows on the deadline where the prop, the floodplain is. Will they be able to get home insurance? Or can they afford home insurance, knowing they're building in a floodplain? The proposed amphitheater is a scary thought for those of us that have animals that are afraid of loud noises, and I'll just leave it at that. We know the plan is to use city water, but if that fails and they have to start drilling wells, what will that do to our well water? Because that's, we don't have city water. We depend on our well, on our wells. Would you want this in your backyard? I know the studies show that, and I, I don't doubt that, the studies show that we need housing for people, for individuals, but they're putting it in the wrong place. 315 FM 2303 is not the place to put this. And my last comment is the planning and zoning committee was appointed by y'all. And they recommended that you not go forward with this, and we ask that you heed their recommendations.
Thanks, Karen.
No, thank you.
Hi, my name is Cassie Hammond. I'm at F, uh, 909 FM 2303. We are at the far end of the community where all of the tall townhouses will be right at our back square of our, our property. Thank you for your time. I've sent a letter to everybody, an email to everybody already. I know you've probably read it and I appreciate your time. Quickly, I'll just go over the, the things that I am concerned about. One, the potential of having probably at least half of that community behind the floodwaters because I've seen them come up further than where they're showing on this plan. Two, the idea that the water drainage may not get pushed the way they intend and it comes back onto the properties that are already existing there. Three, the lack of the secondary, um, access. Four, 2,000 new residents with daily activities that come in and out of 500 feet from that front entrance to that stop sign is 500 feet. And we've got all this new traffic. We've got a 24/7 shuttle bus running. We've got stops and starts at 60 miles an hour. There's no lots and there's only a stop sign in that's 500 feet. The water and sewer pipes that we talked, she talked about earlier, that they talked about, um, issues with them, yeah, infrastructure going back and faulty and going back into our water tables for all of our wells right there. We have two wells on our property. There's at least one on every other property going down through there. The possibility of the young professionals not showing up and not filling these homes, which was already mentioned, the possibility of phase two, I guess it's only two phases. I'm sorry, I didn't know that. Phase two not looking like phase one because they can't fill it at their desired pictures and ideas. The requested height addition will compromise the privacy of the homeowners that own the property along those lines with them. And that's a concern. The urban use of this property in a rural community is the biggest concern for me personally because we all have 10, 20, 30, 100 acres on that property and you're putting five homes to a, an acre behind us. So that's, that's my biggest concern. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Cassie. Judy Addison.
Good evening. I'm Judy Addison and I live at 381 FM 2303. I'll just, I sent my letter in too, but I'm just going to kind of highlight over it too or read it quickly. So, uh, to begin, the adjoining property owners were not notified of this property being annexed into the, to the city of Stevenville in April, or we would have been here to oppose it. There are numerous concerns and reasons this property should, does not belong in this location. Several concerns are traffic, safety, noise, litter, increasing crime, water well contamination or the Bosque River contamination, flooding and decrease in our property values. Traffic and safety should be a major concern and priority. This project is literally not one, but multiple accidents waiting to happen. Vehicles try, travel at a high rate of speed in this area with two major highways coming together in an extremely short distance, 500 feet from the entrance. Pickups and trailers are about 62 feet long if you get the long trailer, and so that's not counting other cars and pickups. There could be up to 400 to 800 more cars or vehicles, uh, in this area, which could only be a disastrous and dangerous situation. Currently, one entrance is being considered, but even if you had two entrances, this area is way too congested already to safely allow that much traffic in and out of this location. I only have three acres and I have to have two entrances there. And, um, and I, I don't know anything about this restructuring of my entrance, which would, they're saying this is a possibility, which I would not agree to. And it says, can you imagine like trying to get 500, 500 to 800 more vehicles in and out of this location? They say it is for young professionals to come and live. We are not a major city that has hundreds of young professionals. Most of the students finish college and then they go to the big city where the big, pay the big salaries. This property will be rented to college students and we all know how that goes. We all have been that age and a lot of college students like to have loud parties, are not responsible and do not drive safely. Parents want to send their kids to a college where it is safe to live and this area will not be safe for their children or the citizens of Stevenville or E-Rath County. Also, this property has major flooding issues. I've seen it flood up to where that, uh, road goes right through the middle of the property. And it's questionable to me crossing the Bosque River too with the sewer line. And as of now, Stevenville and Torleton have a good reputation of being a safe community. Is it worth risking someone's life and/or our reputation by allowing an outside investor who has done, who has never done a project like this and has no ties or commitment to this town or university? Would you, as leaders of this community, want to risk or be liable for a potential lawsuit against the city if someone is seriously injured or killed at this location because it is not safe? Again, I believe this location is not suitable for this kind of project. I'm a proud graduate of Torleton State University and a Stevenville citizen in E-Rath County for over 30 years. Overall, we are all citizens who support our community, Torleton, and have, and have invested our life savings in our homes and properties. How would you feel if it was your property? Would you want to live next door to this? Unlike investors and students who come and go, Stevenville and E-Rath County students are the backbone of this community and are here to stay. I support Torleton, but not at the expense of our loyal, hardworking citizens, homes, property values and safeties, and safety. And evidently, Mr. Parks said he had, uh, done $250 million in projects, so obviously, uh, he could afford to buy property that would be more suitable for this kind of project and proceed with that. We cannot afford to move or have our properties devalued because this is all we have. Also, the P&amp;Z did vote against this, uh, last month. And also, I think the Spanish design is not really a design for Stevenville. And, uh, and I don't know about this new plan that they were talking about for 2050. I, I don't think most of us will be around for that, but anyway. But anyway, thank you for, uh, thank you for your time and, and consideration on this matter.
Thanks, Judy. Kim Winfrey.
My name is Kim Winfrey and I live at 615 FM 2303. This is not my thing. I'm not a public speaker, so bear with me and I'm sorry. I feel like this is a city development. He said he was from San Antonio. This sounds like it fits perfect in San Antonio. At the very first P&amp;Z meeting, the pictures that he showed us, those pictures weren't on there today, but he said that was the Austin skyline in the background. I feel that that's, that's where this city development is. I grew up here. I went to school here. I have family here. I taught school here. I had to move away for a job, but I got back as soon as I could. I love this community. I want to live here and I want to retire here and stay here. I don't want, I just bought this place. We have remodeled it and that's what we're hoping to do. We've already had one, uh, family put their place up for sale and I, I just don't want that to happen. A concern, I have several concerns. He talks about how all these, you know, services they're going to have and everything. As you all know, because you're on the city council, uh, we have an employee, uh, problem in Stevenville. Our own splash field that the city of Stevenville has posted all summer long, having to close because they don't have, uh, employees. And it's been on all their Facebooks and all of that, and I think that's a concern because he's got, they painted a really, really pretty picture of all the things they're going to do, which I know that happens in the city because they have that type of, you know, citizens and people that live there. Also, the developer said, um, that they've never, at the very first P&amp;Z meeting we had, that they had never done a development like this. They had done something about a historic hotel in Amarillo, but had not done a development like that, this. That concerns me that, um, Stevenville is going to be the test project for that. Because we're a small town, you know? It's all of our hometown and many of you I know and have known all my life and I just, it's just a big concern that sometimes I think we, I would like to keep it a small town. The traffic, they've all stated about how the traffic is an issue. I know the Tech Dot has not finished theirs. I think that was one of the big things at the P&amp;Z committee that you all appointed. Uh, one of the big reasons they don't want, didn't want to, uh, whatever, approve it or whatever suggested to you is because Tech Dot has not done, not done that. Uh, I know someone that has had an accident without this development here and they can't work anymore. And it's in that spot right there. So it's already a dangerous situation. They talk about how many bedrooms they were going to have. If you multiply that two times, uh, by two, that's like 600 and something vehicles coming in and out of one entrance at that intersection, which is, there's also a feed store. So we also have trailers and trucks and tractors and things like that right across. So we, it's a very congested area anyway, and then we add all of this on top of it. I know one topic is the, um, the annexation. I know that they explained how they posted it and, but we, and, and maybe they didn't, I don't know the laws and, but I didn't know to watch that that was going to be annexed. And, um, I've, I had now found out just talking to friends and citizens, that, you know, it was discussed in like civic, um, clubs and coffee shops, but we didn't know about it. We found out afterwards. And I know, I, and, and I know your, your, your staff is qualified and they do what is supposed to be done, but we didn't know and I, I just, I think we lose that hometown feel on that. The topic of compliance, I know they talked about how they were going to comply. I mean, I don't really understand how our city staff is going to be able to make sure that they're complying to all of these things that they have stated. The, um, the rental property that they're suggesting, all of the things, the height requirement, um, that will kind of go over into my, my area and the, um, all the area, they said they came back and they're, they're putting a fence. So when I step out on my back porch, I get to see the, um, the storage buildings and there's also dumpsters that they had in the original one. I don't know if they still have it. Dumpsters and storage buildings right there. And at one time, they said it was a six-foot fence. I'm five foot. It's not much taller than me. We're still going to see storage buildings on, right when I step out on my back porch. And, uh, I just, I hope that y'all consider these things for us. We all live here. We're not from San Antonio or the other places. We, we live here. We want to be part of this community and we love it here. And, um, I just feel like we're moving really fast and maybe we need to slow down a little bit and, and think about this, get Tech Dot to do their thing. Think about how, you know, the concerns about keeping it rented. What if we don't have those type, that sound, they look beautiful from their part, their side, but from our side, it doesn't look that way. And what if they don't have the, uh, people to rent it? You know, then what happens? Does it go under? But then it's already been rezoned. So then what's going to go there? And who's going to, if they can't afford to, or if they don't get it rented, they're not going to be able to afford all these things, these, this really big, pretty picture that they've painted that happens in the city. I've lived in the city. I've seen all these developments. I have kids that live in the city. I don't want to live in the city. I want to live in Stevenville, Texas. I want to live in our hometown with all of y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Does anybody else in the public hearing like to speak in for or opposition to the
How much do y'all anticipate?
If you'll give us your name and address.
Sorry, Kristy Barnes. And I live at 11586 FM 2156, um, a little bit past 23, but technically, um, it is the Lingleville area in Dublin, Texas, 76446. But I work here in Stevenville and I get to serve our lovely community. How much do y'all anticipate rent being at these professional development homes?
John?
Don't need to be addressing the developer.
Oh. Oh, okay. Do y'all know how much they intend of unit rent?
I haven't heard of unit rent. I guess I can ask that question, can I? I can ask that question.
Yes.
John or Cole?
I'm happy to, John.
Yeah.
So standard rental rates, they'll be nine hundred to eleven hundred dollars per bedroom, just like we see in other rental areas.
Anything else, Kristy?
Okay. Um, so at, at that rental and the number of bedrooms that we heard and to, so I get in my mental health professional practice, get to be with a lot of the rental property. I actually just happen to have that clientele and they talk about the stresses of renting those properties and the problems they have, and I get to hear in great detail of both from real estate and rental property. I think that they're right. I am from San Antonio, Texas, and I thought, oh, this looks like, the minute it came up. And my in-laws live in, um, the Wimberly Kyle area in Austin, much in a community like this. This isn't that community and they're gonna have to morph. Um, in our area, the average, even if you have degrees, master's degrees, even if you get eighty-five dollars at an average an hour for a session of professional ten years in college in this area to meet that rent at that number, it's not, something's gonna have to change. That population isn't here. And I was on the twenty-fifty and some of the plans and have been at some of the meetings. And what we're trying to do is if you get a young professional in this area, it's gonna be teachers, um, let's just say, and so let's put those numbers of what we make here, right? Working at Torleton State University before we opened a practice at the gathering place, I was a director and that averages fifty-six thousand dollars a year. And my husband worked for the school district at that time. Putting both of ours together, two professionals with double master's degrees in this area at a standard, we all make it degree, right? Um, I mean, and we're trying to run our cattle farm out where we live with our twenty acres and we make at best together, um, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. At that rental, young professionals, I mean, it doesn't take rocket science to say like, where are those people gonna come from? If they're, if we're looking to meet the needs of Stevenville, Texas. And that was just literally, I came to pray blessings for y'all. That was me listening, just the logistics. It's not gonna look like that here. It just doesn't fit here at those rates. And something's gonna have to change there. It's lovely, absolutely lovely. It's not Stevenville, Texas. It's not realistic to young professional families here.
Thank you, Kristy. Anybody else want to speak in for or opposition to the project?
Can I just add?
Yes, I'll give you a few seconds.
Judy Addison again. I mean, can I just add? That's nine hundred to eleven dollars per room. That's not for a whole unit or two or three bedrooms like you would, you know, a home or something. That is per person. So if you've got two bedrooms, that's nine hundred to eleven dollars per person, just for a room. You know, that's not like you're renting a house or, you know, a, a whole apartment. I mean, this is a room. So, you know, and you multiply that by the, whatever, however many units they're talking about and two or three per unit, you know, some of them are three bedroom, I think, and then some of them are one bedroom, two bedroom, but anyway. And most people cannot afford that, that rate for, you know, one room. I mean, usually it's a family that, like she said, you know, you're, you're two working people that can pay twelve hundred or fifteen dollars, a hundred dollars or something like that per month, uh, you know, much less a, an, you know, a college student or a young professional.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Hearing none?
I guess I better go.
Go ahead, Cole, come on.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, three minutes.
Three minutes, all right. Thank y'all again for your time. Obviously, we're passionate about the project. Just a couple of things I'll share. Uh, again, um, I'm not an out-of-town developer. Coach Reese, man, your wife maybe sent my kids to First Baptist Church. I've served on local boards. My wife and I both graduated from Stevenville High School. If we could afford to put a plow in the ground in Erath County, we'd probably still be living over here. We live in Comanche. We drive here every day. If you check the tax rolls, we're heavily invested in this community. Uh, we're here, we're local. I drive here three or four times a week. Ma'am, I run cattle right out at the end of the road by you. I drive down Chil, or down, uh, Pigeon Road multiple times a week. I buy feed at the feed store. Yeah, I buy feed at the feed store right across from La Paloma. Um, I've been to graduation parties at your Airbnb, Ms. Hammond. It's a beautiful home. And Ms. Winfrey, I was on the school board when you were at the SISD, so I'm not out of town. I'm here because I want to invest in the community. Those of you that know me know I'm passionate about growth and I'm gonna try and not, uh, get emotional about this, but look, I could cut up that lot and we could put, I think, four hundred and fifty homes on there. And I believe that this product is better for my neighbors because we're not just cutting them up and selling off starter homes. I don't want to divide land. I'm passionate about growing things and dividing land. You know, that's not what I want to do. So by building it this way, uh, we're growing the community. Uh, I understand there's concerns about rental rates. I own and manage multiple properties around town. We easily get eleven to fourteen hundred dollars per room and some of those on the nicer units. Um, and I'll, I did our market study, which all of y'all, um, are welcome to take a look at, the rates that we've, have quoted currently in that nine and eleven hundred dollar number, uh, our market study says we could charge up to forty percent more than that and we would fill up. So the guys that did that study, we put a lot of faith in them before we made our investment decisions here and, uh, they've done a good job with it. Uh, I made a couple of notes on my phone. I got one more minute here. Um, again, like I said, I think that the rental product that we're building here is much better than a subdivision. Uh, this is not a new idea for us. This has been done all over. Um, I actually have some peers in the investment asset management space that have been doing these. Uh, they work very well. They address housing needs. They also address the fact that people can't currently buy homes with interest rates as high as they are. And, um, hopefully it helps people stay in Stevenville and grow with Torleton and with the community. So I'm, I'm open to questions. I don't know, y'all can ask them, but you're welcome.
We're in public hearing.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for your time.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Anybody else? We've already spoken, you've spoken twice.
I'm pleased with the criteria.
Anybody else in the council? Hearing none, it is seven eleven. I'll close the public hearing. Consider case number PD twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-one. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve ordinance number twenty-two-four zero nineteen, which would be a, uh, ordinance rezoning land described in, uh, the zoning ordinance in front of us, which are the, the parcels off of two fifteen Farm Road twenty, excuse me, two fifteen Farm Road twenty-three oh three, the two parcels.
Zach, enough detail?
Is that enough?
Three fifteen.
Yep. Did you say from R, R one to PD?
I did not, but I will make that, from R one to PD.
So just make it clear, three fifteen Farm Road twenty-three oh three. Is that, is that clear?
That is.
And, and I'd like to, if we're gonna consider that motion, I'd like for a, what called friendly amendment, that there is an issue dealing with parking dedication.
Let's get a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
All right, sorry.
Now I'm gonna ask for, they're procedural here. Thank you very much, that's why you're here, sir. Appreciate you. Gerald, I'm gonna recommend a, uh, one amendment, friendly amendment to, on the parking dedication that will allow the city manager and the developer to come to an agreement on what that project is, other than just the regular plan development that was asked for.
Yes.
Okay. So you accept, you have a second to that as well? Okay.
Let me vote on that, Mr. Mayor.
We need to vote on the, on my, on my amendment. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now on the actual motion itself.
As amended.
As, as amended, here you go. Gotta make sure it's right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. That in mind, we're going to change the agenda just a little bit. I'm sorry, Gerald, we're gonna move down to Matty. Justin is here. He just stepped out. We're gonna, on our nominations committee, I'm gonna turn it over to Matty. If someone will step out and get Justin, just take a second.
All right, so the nomination committee met back in June eighteen. Um, sorry, I wasn't able to make the July meeting, get back in town in time. Um, I have one question before we start, Randy. Do I need to do each one of these individually?
Yes.
Okay. So we met to discuss, uh, open positions on current advisory board and commissions that we offer the city. The first one that was brought, um, to council with positive recommendation was, um, we'll go here. Mr. Nix is now serving on council with us, that he is going to be replaced by Justin Slosson, moving Justin Slosson from alternate one to place two on planning the zone. Um, so I'd like to make a motion that the council approves Justin Slosson move from alternate one to place two on planning the zone.
Second, please.
Do you say?
He didn't.
All right. Can't hear.
Sorry.
Well, he, neither one of you can hear. I mean.
Have a motion and a second on the floor? Any discussion, questions? See to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next one.
The next is moving, um, James Stevenson from alternate two to alternate one on planning zoning board. So I'd like to make the motion that we move James Stevenson from alternate one to alternate two on planning zoning board.
Do you have a motion? Any here a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next one that we have without a interview required is going to be, um, the replacement of Marilyn Meter on the Western Heritage Board. And Ms. Durfee recommended that we replace Marilyn with Angie Ayers, and that was brought forth to council with positive recom, positive recommendation. So I'd like to make the motion that we remove, uh, we replace Marilyn Meter from place four on the Western Heritage Advisory Board with Angie Ayers.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Matty's always the most busy of all committees. Better organize.
We do have two resignations that I just wanted to mention while we're here. Mr. Phil Beers stepped down from Main Street Advisory Board. Um, so we currently have a place one open on the Main Street Advisory Board and I do not believe we currently have any applicants for that. And then we also had, um, Kate Barton stepped down from the library board in place three. And, uh, we have someone, but we have not brought that to committee. Um, so then we'll move into the committees that have to have interviews for them to serve on their boards. And the first one we're gonna discuss is the Stevenville Economic Development Authority Board. And Ms. Lori Beatty did resign from place four and so, um, we recommended Justin Hasky replace Ms. Beatty in place four. So we, we do require an interview for this seat, so if Mr. Hasky doesn't mind stepping up.
We'll need to know where you live.
Justin Hasky, yeah. Neighbor. Uh, thirteen hun, thirteen-twenty, Con Hill Road, Stevenville, Texas. Uh, and, uh, own a business here in town, raise my family, and, uh, very passionate about, um, any way that I can help to grow the community, so.
So I've got just a couple of simple questions.
Okay.
One of them's really redundant, but have you served on any boards or committees before?
I have.
Which ones and for how long?
I was lucky enough to serve up there with you, Matty, and then, uh, also I've served on the, the CETA board previously as well.
And then my next question is, in your experience on council, uh, what do you feel the role of CETA board is and how do you like to achieve it?
Well, I think that, uh, one of the important things that, that CETA brings to the table is to help, um, Stevenville think about strategically important ways to grow and, and not just growth at any cost, but in a way that, um, fits the needs of its citizens. And so I think that's, that's what I hope to bring to the board is, is thoughtful consideration as projects bring, uh, opportunities to bring businesses to town.
Does anybody else have any other questions for Justin? Those are the only three that I have. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Justin Hasky from place, or to place four on the Stevenville Economic Development Authority.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're still all mad at you.
Okay. Stay, you stay mad at me from a distance.
We will, thanks, Justin.
Thanks for continuing to serve, Justin.
Thank you.
And while we're still on CETA, we also had Gerald Cook, who was on place seven on CETA. He's now sitting on council with us over here and, um, so we, we had Mark McClintock also file for, uh, place seven on CETA. And that came forward with positive recommendation. And so if Mr. McClintock doesn't mind stepping up to the podium.
Always the most serious-looking guy ever up here.
Is he, is he nervous?
No, just serious.
As long as he doesn't turn it around backwards.
That's right. And pull my pants down.
You're going too far now.
Can you state your address, please?
Uh, nine eight four Vanderbilt.
Have you served on any boards or commissions before? And so which ones and for how long?
I have recently served, right there, as a matter of fact, for several years.
I'm also mad at you too.
Uh, from a distance.
Keep it to ourselves. Um, I'll ask you the same question as Justin. In your experience on council, what do you feel is your role as CETA board member and how do you plan to achieve it?
Yes, I think, uh, one of the key goals for any EDC, CETA included, is to provide a, a return on investment. So the, the voters of Stevenville, you know, set in motion the EDC by, by funding it with a small portion of sales tax, and I think that, uh, one of the, the main obligations is to make positive returns on that money. And, um, I think that's the same kind of a mindset I had serving on council is, is how to get the biggest bang for the buck. And so, uh, there's that portion of it. The other portion is just strictly human compassion. Ashley has been for years trying to wrangle, uh, an honorary beast and, as it turns out, I have a wide variety and collection of, of piggin' strings and I'm pretty good at open till takedown and tie-down. So I think I can.
I'm glad to see that.
Huh? Yeah, payback. But, no, I, this is, uh, this is something that I, I've been, since the inception of this group, I've attended the vast majority of the meetings they've ever held and so I believe my, uh, I have a history there. I think I can provide a context to, to what they've tried in the past, what's worked, what hasn't worked and, uh, and, uh, so that's it.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mark? With that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Mark McClintock in place seven on Stevenville.
Second.
Perfect.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks for coming back, Mark.
Yes, Mark, thank you for continuing to serve our community. Um, I have one more and that is going to be on board of adjustments. Mr. Parr has now started with us here on council as well, so his spot on place three was vacant and we had Ms. Tina Virgin apply, um, for that role. And we'd like to bring, she is coming forward with positive recommendation to council to fill that role. Um, just have a few questions for Ms. Virgin. Can you state your address, please, ma'am?
Yes, I'm Tina Virgin and I live at eighteen oh four North Cypress here in Stevenville.
And have you served on any boards or committees before?
Not as far as citywide or county, but I have in my current role as a nurse and at the hospital.
And then what made you want to serve on the Board of Adjustments?
The main reason is just to get involved with, with Steenville, you know, to, to give back somehow or another for my community. I just want to be involved in what's going on, all the going ons. I've learned a lot tonight, I can tell you that. But I just, I've, I've had a void that, that took place, and so now I have time to really dedicate some of my time to, to my community. And this community is a great community, and I love it. I love this town, and kids, grandkids, so I just want to give back.
Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Virgin?
Is it Dr. Virgin?
It is Dr. Virgin. How many times can you say that, Doug?
Over the forty years we've known each other? Dr. Tina Virgin.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Dr. Tina Virgin to the Board of Adjustment in place three.
So have a motion as second. Have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve our community.
Absolutely, thank you.
With that, I have no more board positions to fill currently, but we always have, you can find the applications online for the current boards that we have open. And I appreciate everybody's willingness to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor.
Your sort of report, right?
This is for Development Services. The, we had a significant discussion, as a matter of fact, over two different meetings with regard to the auto-related uses, at least as permitted uses versus possible conditional uses with regard to business and commercial districts. They all brought about because of one change I thought for Wolf Nursery Road. We asked the staff to come up with four different options for us and to take a look at that. And those were presented to us. You have copies of that. But basically, it's to make auto paint and body a conditional use in a B two district, or for all automotive related to be conditional uses in a B two district, or that we take no action, or that we take no immediate action with the understanding that these items will ultimately be addressed in the new comprehensive plan and the revised land use regulations that will be coming in the future. The committee decided, even though listed on this report by unanimous vote, that to make no recommendation to the city at this point, but rather we realize that this will be addressed in late in the next year through the comprehensive plan and land use regulations. And then it will come back to the city at that point. So that ends our report.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Nix.
Mayor, thank you. The Public Works Committee met. We have several items on our agenda, and I'm going to try to go through them as quickly as I can. First item on our agenda, we had a discussion about the renaming of the Northwest Loop to Senator Robert J. Glasgow Loop. There were a number of people that came and voiced their opinions on the renaming of that. The majority of the people that spoke were in favor of renaming it to Senator Robert J. Glasgow Loop. There were some that wanted to honor the senator, but only with a different or a second method rather than an, with an honorary change rather than a physical change. But the council had already taken action on this. After hearing those that spoke in favor and questioned the decision, the committee decided that there was no action necessary. There is no recommendation coming to the council, and there is no action necessary by the council at this time. The second item has three parts to it, second item on our agenda. The first of which is the refurbishment of the belt filter press. And if Maddie wanted to, I would let her give the description of what this does. But basically, what we need to do is we need to do some maintenance that has been deferred for some time out there. Andritz Separation Technologies is the manufacturer of this particular device. It, it is also noted that they are the only supplier for replacement parts for this device. There was money approved in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget for this specific repair. The cost that they came to us with was three hundred five thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and a lead time of eighteen to twenty weeks. The committee, after discussion, voted unanimously to forward a positive recommendation to the council to approve the proposal with Andritz Separation Technologies in the amount of three hundred five thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars. And I will make that a motion at this time to approve that agreement with Andritz Separation Technologies.
Have a motion. I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion as second for discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item is the conveyor system, which works in conjunction with that belt filter press. Also, we have a proposal from Parks and Corporation. These repairs were also budgeted in this fiscal year budget. They, Parks and came to us. They are the manufacturer and the sole sur- sole, uh, sought sole survivor, sole provider.
They may be.
They may be the sole survivor, but they're the sole provider for the equipment, repair parts that are needed for that conveyor. Their total for their work was forty-nine thousand, nine hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty cents with a lead time of nine to eleven weeks. Again, after a discussion, the council, the committee brings forward to the council a positive recommendation for this particular repair, and I would make a motion to honor the agreement with Parks and Corporation for the amount of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred sixty-three, sixty for the repair of the conveyor system.
Second. Have a motion as second? For the discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Third item under number two is a proposal from Evoqua Water Technologies to replace two aeration drives at the wastewater treatment plant. Again, these funds were budgeted in this year's budget. They came forward with a bid for these two aeration drives of ninety-four thousand, five twenty-three eighty with an approximate lead time of ten to twenty weeks. Again, with a brief explanation of what these do, these are an integral part of the process that takes place at the wastewater treatment plant. The committee voted again unanimously to bring a positive recommendation to the council for the agreement with Evoqua Water Technologies, and I would make that in the form of a motion to approve their presentation for the total cost of nine, ninety-four thousand, five twenty-three eighty.
Hear a second?
Second.
Motion as second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three on our agenda is considered the abandonment, abandonment of the public works infrastructure in Creekside Apartments. Creekside Apartment Complex is an apartment complex that was constructed with the understanding that they would build, and the city would then have meters on individual apartments. That has not worked out well for the city, and although they are only about six percent of the city's water meters, they account for about thirty percent of the city's calls for service from our department. That's a three-man department that takes care of that, and because of complications at this location, they spend a significant amount of time there. Mr. Williams came to us with a request to replace that system with a master meter and vault combination. He has a bid on that for fifty-nine thousand, one oh eight fifty-five, and then the installation estimate of about fifty thousand dollars. This will not, this will simplify the process, because we'll have one meter to maintain at that point, and those responsible then will get the, their monies from the individual tenants, and we won't go back and forth because of the transitory nature of the people that rent those. The policy that we have in place now does not specifically address this. If it's the will of the council, these two amounts for the meter and vault combination and the installation estimate will need to be included in next year's budget. They are not budgeted in this year's funds, but if the council agrees that this needs to be done, these monies will instruct staff to include these monies in next year's budget. And then I have a policy change that we need to consider if the council believes that this is the route that we need to take. I think the first course of action would be if we concur with what the committee said at that time to instruct staff to bring these items back to us in next year's proposed budget. And I would make the motion to do that. Is that necessary?
No, sir.
Okay. Do I need to have a consensus of the council for that?
No, sir.
Okay, that will be included in our budget.
Assuming you aban- approve the budget.
The council goes through with the abandonment, then yes, sir. Okay.
That's, that's the motion.
Okay, all right, so I'll take that motion back.
Or if there's no action on it.
We need to. I'll, I'll ask Mr. King, do we need to discuss the abandonment first or the revision in our policy?
Yes. Take up twenty-two.
Take number twenty-two.
Take up twenty, twenty-two and abandon of the.
Okay. We will do that, then. The next item that we need to deal with is the abandonment and, okay. I have an ordinance that will address, and the ordinance number is twenty. Ordinance number twenty, twenty twenty-four dash zero twenty that will abandon the infrastructure for Creekside Homes located at one thousand east Lingable Road in the city of Steenville.
Have a motion. I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
So following that, then, staff will include in next year's budget the equipment to replace that. And the next thing that we need to look at is a revision to our city policy. And we have that revision that y'all have in front of you now. It, it is a revision to our engineering standards manual, and it talks about the water service to multi-unit facilities, and then the way that those things will be taken care of for the builder. At his expense, will furnish and pay for the installation of the master meter and the vault that is in that. And I would make the motion that we approve this change to our engineering standard manual to include one point one one master meter and submetering.
So you made the motion, or a second?
Second.
Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Mayor, I think that concludes. No, there's one more item. I apologize. We, we, the committee had a discussion over the pro-rata fees that have been charged for a long time. They have been established to recover fees that the city has expended and/or developers have expended to install utilities in various areas around the town. We discussed this at the committee level, and Mr. King has done a significant amount of research on this. And he made a presentation to us, and I'm going to ask him at this time if he would bring that presentation forward to the council so they will have the benefit of the information and the research that he has gathered on this.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, as Mr. Nix stated, our policy on pro-rata fees has been around for a really long time. I think in here we said over thirty years, in some cases, I think over forty years. And so as the city annexed and practiced involuntary annexation in those days, if the, if the city extended utilities or if a private developer did, then there was a fee associated. Once that line was laid, then they took the cost of that installation and then broke it down on a per parcel fee and said, as people develop later and want to hook on, they're going to pay for the footage of their parcel. They're going to pay their portion of what that line costs to install. And that was probably a pretty good policy at that time. But in a lot of those cases, the, the development hasn't occurred, and you've got lines that are probably old enough that already need to be replaced again. And so asking a potential developer to pay a, in some cases, pretty high fee for a portion of the line that was laid thirty-plus years ago, and then also pay to then replace that line pretty quickly, it brought into some questions. And, and some of this came up from some current projects that were going on. Part of it was also the record keeping and the way it was done. Each annexation, it was like somebody different maybe was doing the, the mapping of the pro-rata fees years ago. And so when Ms. Harris or her staff or Nick and his staff are trying to go back and look and see who maybe gets charged for what, it's kind of a hodgepodge of how that information was put together. In twenty eighteen, we had a discussion on this topic, and ultimately then, we decided, or the council decided, to abandon our pro-rata policy as it pertained to residential development. And so if you were on one of those maps and you were going to develop as a residence, then we no longer had the pro-rata for you, but we kept it for commercial business development. And I, I, I think we were trying to solve a need at the time and not kind of be a hindrance to residential development. But now we have some of those same questions coming up on commercial development, and I think you have some fairness points that come into play. Because really, use of water is use of water, and in some cases, commercial properties probably use less water than some residential ones. So after all that, and, and looking at all the information in the length of time that's passed, our request to you is to just do the same thing we did in twenty eighteen, and let's also abandon the, the old pro-rata fees that we have on the commercial development that would still be on the maps, and just abandon that and, and move forward from here. We don't, it's not a, a situation that we have to worry about anymore, kind of like you heard tonight with the PD development that, that you approved. That extension of those lines will be taken care of by the developer moving forward. We also won't act as a bank anymore for a private developer. If they want to maintain their records and work with somebody in the future on trying to recover some of those costs, they'll certainly be welcome to. But we'll kind of keep the city out of the middle of that. And anybody that wants to annex in, the extension of those utilities is on the developer to do that when they want to annex in, it's approved by the council. So realistically, this isn't something we should have to mess with again. I don't anticipate the annexation laws in Texas going back the other way.
My call.
Anytime soon.
Any questions for Al or Jason?
Okay, thank you, Mr. King.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, coming forward from the committee, the committee made the unanimous recommendation that we approve the ordinance repealing the pro-rata standard, as Mr. King has just explained. And I would make the motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero twenty-one. An ordinance repealing the subdivision ordinance of the city of Steenville, Texas, section one five five point five oh five, Development Agreements and Security for Completion subsection F Pro-rata Policy for Infrastructure Reimbursement.
Second.
Have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And that does conclude my report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Durfee's.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee met on July sixteenth, and we reviewed Steenville's lodging performance review. Mr. Daryl Brown, our administrative service director, presented that. And just to summarize it, we had the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. We have five hundred and twenty rooms, and that does include our Airbnbs. And twenty twenty-three, our total room count was four ninety-three, so we've increased twenty-seven rooms. And the six column source strategies shows that we have an occupancy of fifty-seven point twenty percent for this quarter. And last year, we ended at sixty point forty estimated occupancy. And the estimated rooms sold at twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixteen with a fair market share which lists us third of the five at eighteen point oh seven percent. And our average daily rates are ninety-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. And we had no action that needed to be taken. And then we also had our Main Street Advisory Board Quarterly Report that was presented by our Main Street manager, Ashley Thomas.
That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Ferris.
Mayor, council, you have the budget report for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four in front of you. Again, we're, we're kind of on track. Our financial indicators are overall as or better than we anticipated. We've received thirty-three thousand in property taxes in the month of June. It results in two hundred and seventy-eight thousand increase over the funds collected last fiscal year to date. Slightly over a hundred percent of what we budgeted, and that's about a hundred and two thousand more than anticipated. We received seven hundred and sixty-five thousand in sales tax in June, resulting in two hundred and five thousand or three percent more than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. That's seventy-eight percent of our budget, and that's about five and that's about five hundred thousand more than we anticipated. Of the thirty-six million revenue received to date, fifty-seven percent was in the general fund, twenty-five percent was received in the waste wa- water wastewater fund, and eight percent was received in the capital projects fund, three percent received in our landfill fund. We have received eighty-four percent of our total budgeted revenues through June. It's about two point two million more than anticipated, uh, thus due to taxes, building permits, intergovernmental charges for services, and interest income. We received one point three million less revenue than June last fiscal year to date, and that's due to debt proceeds that we received last year that did not recur this year. Of the forty million, uh, spent to date, forty-six percent was expended in our water wastewater fund, forty percent was expended in our general fund, four percent was expended in our capital projects fund, three percent was expended in the debt service fund, and two percent was expended in both the storm fund and the landfill fund. We've expended fifty-four percent of our total budget expenditures through June. That's eighteen point five million less than anticipated due to personnel, contractual, um, the bulk of it is capital outlay and some transfers. We spent five million less in expenditures through June, um, than last fiscal year to date, and that's due to capital and some transfers. For CETA, they have received an overall eighty-three percent of their budgeted revenue through June. That is twenty-seven thousand more than last fiscal year to date, and eighty-six thousand more than anticipated due to taxes and interest income. CETA has spent an overall twenty perc- twenty-six percent of their budgeted expenditures through June. That's two hundred and seventy-two thousand less than last fiscal year to date, and that's due to grant dispersments, and eight hundred and thirty-two thousand less than anticipated due to contractual capital outlay and grant dispersments. Are there any questions on the budget report?
Questions?
For our quarterly investment report for the period ending June thirtieth, the, um, total market value of cash and investments on June thirtieth was fifty million eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. This is allocated five percent in our demand accounts, three percent in cash and money market accounts, two percent in, uh, certificates of deposits, forty-two percent in TechStar investment pool, and forty-eight percent in our tech pool investment pool. We've earned six hundred and seventy-seven thousand in interest for the quarter. The average yield to maturity for all account types for the quarter was five point one-four percent. The average yield to maturity for our investment accounts was five point four-three percent, and the average yield to maturity for a three, three-month treasury bill for the quarter was five point two-five percent. So, we're just a little bit above that. The weighted average maturity of, in days of the portfolio was three point two-two days, so we, we were pretty liquid. Any questions?
Questions?
I have one. Mr. King?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Harris, you were telling a story about some edits she had to make to her budget request, or her, well, do you, we, we need to correct it officially right now, so, call her. And I know you can't, you guys, that, this is...
So, for this budget year that we're currently in, last year when we presented that information, Monica made a prediction twelve months ago on what our budgeted revenue for property tax would be. Uh, and the other day, when we were, uh, examining that in preparations for this year's budget, uh, and understand that was seven million and some numbers, so it was a big number. Uh, and so, I say prediction, or she says prediction, educated guess, uh, she was seven dollars difference.
So, I think we should put that in revaluation this year? Thank you, Monica. Appreciate you.
Is that the best you could do?
So, that's about point zero 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 one, I think, something like that. All right, sir. Since you got executive session, you're gonna do this quickly.
Oh, don't worry. I've been threatened by three board members that are now in the room, and I never get that, so, so unfortunately, David, you don't get anything fun.
Did you bring dinner?
Uh, I didn't. I had to change that to breakfast. Uh, so, uh, everybody's been watching the Olympics, I hope, and if not, uh, you need to, 'cause it's a lot of fun. It's one time of the, every, so often, and we actually get united as a country, and it's pretty cool to watch. Currently, we have eighty-six medals and are leading, had to check this twice during tonight, but, uh, uh, we are leading, uh, the entire country. And of course, I think it should be noted that we have a Tarleton student who, uh, won a silver medal on, uh, on Saturday, Connor Prince in skeet shooting, and that's pretty, pretty darn, uh, cool. So, uh, when he comes back, if he hasn't already, I haven't heard, but, you know, we need to celebrate that cool thing, uh, that's going on. Might also be noted that, having, having nothing to do with the Olympics, uh, Jarrett Studdum today was named the starter of, uh, the Broncos, which is pretty cool. I don't know how long that'll last, but we hope it's good. Um, one quick story, he, uh, he's the one, when Carson, my son, got, uh, pushed into quarterbacking a couple of years ago into a starting role, Jarrett was the one who called him up and said, uh, some nice things to him, so that was pretty awesome. Uh, I'm gonna skip all the fun stuff that I had because of, uh, everybody else took my, my fun time, but I did want to mention that, um, a couple things, uh, we have some projects going on right now that you'll hear more about, and of course, council, you'll hear them in future executive sessions if you haven't come to any of our meetings. In the next six to nine months, we'll have announcements on Project Homer, Project J-two-four, Project Azul, Project Crown, Project Congo, Project Digit, and Project Bridge, all over a hundred million dollars worth of new investment in our community within the next six to nine months. So...
We're gonna make Monica, you'll go with him, five dollars of that one, too.
Uh, I'm very broad on mine, so, but, uh, but hopefully, uh, we can get to that point where she's doing it. So, I'm really excited, and I just want to reiterate also, um, the idea of, uh, and I think Christie had mentioned it before in her invocation, we have a whole bunch of Tarleton kids coming back, and they are, in many ways, the lifeblood of our community. Not to downplay the existing citizens and other folks that visit our community, uh, which is increasing at a high, high rate. With these Tarleton students, um, it's really cool to live in a college town, and we should all be very thankful for that. Uh, they'll bring in a lot of commerce, many of them, I believe the number is well over seventy-six per- seventy-two percent of kids that stay here year-round. Uh, so, they are a workforce year-round and are part of the workforce, and that is increasing each and every year. But we need to welcome them. It's not a frustration if it takes a few extra seconds to get home or get across town or whatever. We need to make sure publicly that we say thank you, because they help with those tax, uh, numbers that you guys, uh, have to set, uh, in this, in this chamber. So, I just wanted to make that public, that we welcome them with open arms, we look forward to their future contributions, um, as our workforce and as contributors to our society. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Questions for Joe? Hearing none, thank you very much. And thank Asher for keeping it short. Next time the consent agenda, do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Uh, motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item, comments by city manager.
Mr. Mayor, council, uh, budget hearings, uh, tomorrow evening at five-thirty, and then Thursday, if necessary. Uh, committee meetings will be on the twentieth of this month. Uh, as Mr. Sanford said, we have lots of Tarleton students returning, move-in starts on the fifteenth, uh, through the eighteenth. Uh, SISD begins on Wednesday, August fourteenth, and then Tarleton's one hundred and twenty-fifth, uh, celebration will be on the third of September. That's all I have.
Yeah.
Um, I just would like to second what Jason said on all the Tarleton students coming to town. I know where I live. I have lots of them that are around me, and, um, so, I hope they all get moved in, and we all go to get our grocery shopping done before they, before they come. But, that's okay. And then, I wanted to remind people that with school starting, that means that there will be school zones, which will be patrolled, and, um, to watch out. We've got a lot of different ways that the streets are running right now with maintenance going on, so please be careful. And then I also wanted to invite everybody to our Western Swing Festival in honor of Milton Brown, who was a, was a resident of Stevieville, and that will be September sixth through September ninth at Birdsong. Lots of great music coming, and that is a free event. So, that's all I have.
Gerald.
Nothing.
I just kinda wanna miniculate, Lee, instead about school starting and school zones, and all of our students will be out on the streets, student drivers, student kids walking home, walking to campus. Uh, just be mindful that those are someone's babies, and let's be careful on the streets and follow the rules. Um, and then also, fall sports is getting underway at the parks, and I got a receipt an email today that they are still looking for a few coaches for a few teams. Uh, if you feel obligated to coach some fifth-grade flag football, then go down to the park and see Darrell and Roderick, and get y'all signed up for that. Darren, I do this all the time, Darren and Darrell. Darren at the park.
Darrell's been a coach?
Yeah, Darrell. He's, he's got fifth grade flag football.
Oh, I know that.
That's great, champion.
That's right, that's right. And then, um...
I can't wait to see that.
That's all I have, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
David.
Uh, once again, uh, school starting, uh, this week or next week, uh, Tarleton's start coming soon. Uh, wanna, uh, wish everybody a great school year, and, uh, teachers and students alike. Uh, so, I think it'll be, hopefully it'll be a great year for everybody. Um, August fourteenth, start of school. It's also the, uh, United Way Fish Fry, so always a great time of year on the first day of school to, uh, get, uh, get your, get your dinner, uh, cooked for you, and handy drive-throughs they have there at the, at the Catholic Church here on, uh, Washington. And, uh, my wife's birthday is Thursday, and I'm not missin' her birthday for a, a council meeting this year, so she's happy with me. Uh, yeah, it is.
Yeah.
So, happy birthday, Nicole.
No comments.
Mayor, I got a couple of things. Uh, Thursday night is the annual SHS Pancake Supper, uh, and, uh, I can tell you that they serve some of the best pancakes you'll get.
Are you cooking?
I'm not cooking, so it'd be safe to eat.
Okay.
But I can tell you, I'll be there to eat my share. It's a fundraiser for them. I think the football team's gonna be serving, uh, and they, they do this every year, and it's a tremendous outreach to the community, uh, and I wanna call everybody's attention to that. Second, I wanna thank all of our city employees. We have a fantastic group of employees. If you drive down the street, it's a hundred and five, and you see 'em out there fixing holes in the street, digging up water lines, our public safety personnel working traffic, uh, taking care of our, our residents and our visitors and everyone else, uh, in the heat and in the adverse conditions that they face, they do a fantastic job. And all of our city employees are such an asset to us, and we don't voice our appreciation for them as frequently as we should, but I wanna voice that tonight, tell them we appreciate them, and tell them we appreciate the, the community we live in and how they take care of that for us. Thank you.
I just wanna say, Matty does a great job in getting board members, uh, for our committees and so on. It's not an easy task. Uh, I wanna call out three particular folks. Uh, I wanna call it Ricky and Mark over there, and Justin, who served on city council, and all of us up here know the dozens of hours a week you spend on city council, and when those gentlemen roll off, uh, they jumped in the middle of it and got back on another board, which is helping our city of Stevieville. I just appreciate what you do, Ricky, what Mark's gonna do, and what Justin's gonna do on city board. I appreciate that, and all the board members we, we have all together. With that said, in compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Law, Subchapter D, Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, annotated in accordance with section five-five-one dot oh-seven-two delivering real property, and section five-five-one dot oh-seven-six delivering security devices, security audits, and five-five dot oh-seven, five-five-one dot oh-seven-two deliberation, uh, regarding real property as well. We'll adjourn, we will recess into executive session. We'll be back. We'll adjourn, we will recess into executive session. We'll be back.
I'll call us back into regular session. We have three items. Do we have any motion from executive section?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I make the motion that we approve the purchase of property as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Allen second. All in favor say aye. Motion passes. Next item.
Mayor, I move to authorize Mr. King to continue the negotiation and establish an arrangement with the Realtor for on behalf of the city.
And the second?
Second.
And motion second. All in favor say aye. Motion passes. Next item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the insurance policy discussed in executive section by Mr. King.
And second? And motion second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? We have a third. It's eight twenty-nine. Will stand adjourned.